2021, 10 o'clock, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley.
Here.
And.
Here.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to be here. Number four, approval of the minutes of the last meeting, March 8th, 2021.
It'll be me.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, discussion and possible action regarding the bridge inspection invoice, six two, six seven, six two, five four, and reporting of conference between Woods County and CDA.
Morning.
Morning.
Donnie, Harry, you just called.
Yeah, we're all right.
Okay, District two?
Yeah. It does, in a year.
District two had nine bridges on the invoice, and we have two that need to have some minor repairs on a bridge, and we have a re-post bridge seventy-four thirty times due to the new rating.
Thank you.
I think District four had twenty-four bridges, and then we got probably a bit of subvention with RAC, and then we had Bridge number seven up on the state line, it's some, uh, it's short up.
Where at?
Up on the state line, we put it on six months.
Oh.
Yeah, Bridge number seven.
That shared bridge?
No, three time timber bridge, yeah. So it needs some, uh, power and plastic to do that one sort of, but we put it on six months. And quite a few RAC ones too that got decked and need replaced, but I gotta get the title and see if, uh.
I'll just come out here.
Right here, yeah, I can't remember if we was gonna get both of those in that project or not.
Well, I thought we were gonna, that north, the farther north one?
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna simply could just put some pipes in it.
Yeah, and I can't remember, I think the south one we're getting it in the project.
I thought we were gonna try.
Yeah. Okay. And, uh, no, uh, no others for repost on the rating.
Thanks, sir.
District three had sixteen bridges. Uh, Bridge two fifty-five is for repost for three tons, and then one of John, two fifty-five needs hauled, repaired in the pier also, so that was already repaired on that.
Two fifty-five?
Yeah, that's the one south of Love Creek, south of the company.
Uh-huh. On the Eco Chief Fair or down on that side?
That was the one that was gonna be a crosshairs, so I'll have to look, it's on your, uh, list. It's on that list there. That's Sand Creek.
Sand Creek.
Yeah, that's the one we, uh, Amy sent the line over, that was out, but it's on there. We're gonna go over those stuff there.
Yeah, about trinkles.
Yes, yeah, that place, forty acres, I guess it is. That's it.
Any other questions on the inspection deals?
I have.
You're up next again, Don.
Oh, I am, okay. I didn't know if you had other stuff.
Do you need to approve that?
Ready?
Do I?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Might wanna do some of that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All these inspections here, is that what we're up for?
Yeah, yes.
I think she said it'd be ten fifteen before she does.
Oh, okay, well, then we'll.
If you got some other stuff.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh-huh, yeah.
They don't have any that are approved for the county club, do they?
No, we're just gonna.
Well, this, alright. We're gonna go, come back to six when that O-Dot meeting gets here. Uh, number seven, discussion and possible action regarding permission to get a carport port on, for the Iowa Petunia Club's annual plant sale.
I'll move it. Okay, that?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What did you do? I like the smell of Petunias. Is that some ladies that starve their green house and they just sell them for?
Yeah.
For people to, to grow, grow them in the summer or?
Yeah.
I don't know where they get them, but, you know.
Send them out to yards and stuff.
Yeah, a lot of.
Number eight, discussion and possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn and parking lot for the Bank Central Big Cruise and Park. Mr. Phillips?
Yes, sir. How are you all today?
Good.
Good. We, uh, we would like to have permissions to use that like we've done, you know, for several years. Um, we didn't, we didn't have it last year, which would've been our twentieth, and we've got a, we've got a lot of things, hopefully headed in the right direction, we're planning on giving away a Corvette and.
Oh, yeah, so moved.
Yeah, but we got a, we got a nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty Corvette that's really nice that we got basically donated to us. Um, and we're gonna give away, and all, you know, all you have to do is get in our car and the car show, it's all free. So that's on the September seventeenth, nineteenth, and nineteenth.
Okay.
And, you know, we use the grounds here and then that parking lot area for concessions and stuff.
Yeah.
And work with Steve, you know.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good. I'll move, we do that.
Oh, I thought he did, so you're second.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
And that's.
He was ready when they said Corvette, love that.
Number seventeen, yeah, it's on it, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah.
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome, take care.
We say. You also, uh.
Been running yet.
They're all pretty much.
I do, I do that once a year.
Yes. They had some other little deals like that, Saturday night.
Yeah, I don't know if that's them or not.
Yeah, they do.
Like a car cruise?
Yeah. Okay, number nine, discussion and possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Highway District One, C-I-R-B, I think.
Oh, yeah.
To Highway District One Personal Services, and District Two, C-I-R-B, to District Two Personal Services in amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three ninety-one each.
I'll move if you do so.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And I need both of you to sign these top two plus the bottom place, and John, just sign down there.
This is the wall. This is right here?
Yeah.
He's looking at it, he's focused on something.
Number ten, pre-discrete monthly reports for the court clerk. I guess this is, uh, what they collected, fees collected?
Yes, and that's for their, um, records management preservation, and I missed it last time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we did the others.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eleven, discussion and possible action regarding air gas annual lease for District One.
Can we accept that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding the Stanley Systems Annual Contract Base Rate for the Apple apartment in an opinion amount of a hundred and ninety-two dollars.
I'll move, we'll accept that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Wish I knew what the hell that is. Or had some kind of computer deal about.
It was a, it was a purely, yeah, their maintenance agreement, and no.
Copiers, yeah.
They own a coffee?
Yeah, that's it.
We talked about that today, and I. That's a pretty busy question. Right now.
Yeah, I bet so.
Yeah, it's a lot of action.
There.
Somebody's telling me that.
Okay, thirteen, new business, and right now, the only thing I have, Friday, Foster, Steve called in about the heat, the exchangers went out and furnished in the DA's office, and he got a letter, deal here for, from Fair, cost thirty-two hundred dollars to fix it, supposedly, or replace the heat exchanger, or their estimate was sixty-four hundred to replace it with new. I hate to even put that out there, because if we, we decide to go new, we need to go out for bids.
I think we ought to, is it something they need right now?
No, I think we have time to go out for bids.
I think we ought to let Steve go around everybody's office, make sure, you know, that they got a good unit that ain't gonna.
I think they're all pretty much the same age, and those heat exchangers, you're never gonna know when they give you problems, and it's like I said, used to when I was involved in that, heat exchanger, it's just to do away with the furnace, but now these have got those computer panels, those boards in them, those boards that if we replace the heat exchanger, then the next thing will be the computer board and whatever, and it's also.
They're about thirteen years old, is that how they are?
Okay, yeah.
Well, they're.
It wouldn't take you days, man, you couldn't size up everybody's stuff.
It's, uh, well, here, here's my thought on it, and the longer they go with this stuff, supposedly, everything gets more efficient, so I, it's my opinion that we ought to replace it, and get a more efficient unit, and new warranty, and the whole nine yards, and, but as far as everything else, I think we just need to look at them as they come.
Well, that, yeah, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that we don't, we don't fix one and then next week that one, well, if you don't know if there's a way of checking them, to see whether.
Usually what happens, when the heat exchanger cracks.
Or something maybe, or?
When they crack, um, let's talk about be a manufacturing deal, or a well, or whatever, but the, the kicker is, is that's where you get that carbon dioxide.
Right.
Leak. Yeah, that poison from those heat exchangers, they are not supposed to leak, and when they crack, that does, that's what, that's what gets people, and.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of.
I don't know if we have, I, yeah, I'm in favor of having to check and be sure we don't have any leaks on either the others.
Yeah.
But we can go out for bids for one or more, you know, if there's, if there's.
I definitely think we should go. I think we ought to get that started anyway.
Well, that's why, that's why I, that's why I think we're really not making a big decision here, and, and, and new business, but it is kind of a deal that we.
But there's definitely need to be fixed today or tomorrow.
Yeah, and they got little heaters in there, and we're closing up the spring, I think, to get by with that, is my understanding.
If we went out for bids for one or more, and then if we'd also maybe see if they would guarantee the price for maybe the next.
Six months?
Six months or something, maybe?
Yeah.
Then if we did have one or more, we would be, we'd have.
Although, I, I just like. Although, I mean, yeah, we're not gonna run them again until next year.
Oh, well, that's true. Yeah, you're right, so that might not be a new gap.
But I, I don't think it's a bad deal.
No.
They have those detectors, I think, and.
Yeah, they can.
Carbon monoxide detector.
I'd like, I'd like for them to check what's left, and, and if there's something that looks like it's gonna need fixed, we ought to fix it and at least get them ready for next one.
But if we could get them guaranteed six months of bid.
Especially if they leak carbon monoxide or something like.
Hell, even if they guaranteed it free, whatever they guarantee it, I think it's worth.
Mm-hmm, for one more than one, just in case, yeah, okay. Cause we might get another full staff, you never know, this is on the mark.
So we need a motion? What do you need a motion?
Just, well, this may be a motion to go out for bids, if that's what you.
Yeah, I think we could.
I'll second that.
Get the ball rolling, and Steve can kind of check out while we're waiting on a.
Well, I think the cost of a service call to have these guys that he had come down here go around and check and see how the other are, you know, worth their, and go from there, I mean, it's, but that doesn't need to be part of the bid, I think that needs probably just a, a service call for them coming in.
That way we can get them to check.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, all of them sounds good.
Yeah. Windmill people, they, you'll see lots of black men down here tonight, I've seen, gonna see a lot more. They got about twenty of them up on power now, and they do, do one or two every day that they're.
And how many again did they put down there? Forgot.
Seventy-three. They got, they have room for a hundred, but they only put seventy-three up.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Uh, they're, they're on schedule, looks like by the end of April, they'll be.
All running.
Handling it all over and finalizing all that stuff, and everything.
Very good.
I got a whole bunch of mat boards that they give me, that they were gonna just destroy.
What's mat boards?
Yeah, they're.
They drive along, let her.
Oh.
They're six inches thick, seven foot wide, fourteen foot long.
That's neat.
I got about fifty of them from them, and they're just gonna throw away.
Yeah.
That'll help me clean the yard, lay it out.
Yeah.
I got the big crane mats that the cranes drive on.
That's nice, yeah.
Other than that, they're about, about to wrap it up.
They just moving on east?
Yeah, they're over there at Lahoma, moving over to Lahoma and then Wedford.
Oh, they are gonna do the deal down there by, in Kingfisher County, Hennessy.
Different company.
Oh, but Blatter didn't get to, come here.
Um, yeah, they might have.
Oh, okay.
But, but Invergey.
Okay.
Is doing Dustfield, Lahoma, and Wedford, and then Next Air might be doing.
Oh, I thought, I thought Invergey had three of them right there.
Well, then what's it?
Hennessy.
McWilly?
Yeah.
That's, that's Next Air or something.
Yeah, I knew it was a different one, but that, I thought Invergey had three of those right into Hennessy.
Uh, just the one there that they're doing, and then there's, there's something over there west of Winter's Livestock, which that's the, Lahoma?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of Lahoma, down in there, they got three, two or three hundred to put up, and then maybe seven hundred down by West Front or something like that.
Wow.
But they're rolling right along there. They got, doubled up at night and got caught up, and then that cold weather kind of slowed them down, plowing that, and when they power that up, you can't be anywhere around, the cows can't be around it, they run everybody away from it, won't even let you go down that county road when they're doing that DC power.
Oh, okay.
Powers it up, and then they walk through there to see if it's, it's bleeding any off, and then, okay.
Well, that's good.
You know, I guess it's shocking, shocking that you walk over. They won't even let you drive down the county roads and stuff.
Wow.
Yeah, it's been years ago, I read an article about, it was up north somewhere, but it was underground electric lines, and it's in a dairy, and the milk production just kept going down on these cows.
Shopping.
And they found out that that, that electricity was coming up through the ground, and it was affecting their.
I've read similar deals about Overhead, them big Overhead, power lines, about.
Yeah.
Cost.
I do transmission already out.
Yeah. Waves coming off of.
Okay, alright, that's all on new business, let's go ahead and approve the blank purchase orders, and then we'll go back to.
I'll move, we approve those.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move back up to six, discussion and possible action regarding Woods County future service projects. Donnie, put that up?
Yep.
And what this is, guys, we restructured, if you look on that big paper, it was, it went to, we tried to get things equal, and so essentially Beaver County was one, main one, and.
It was getting shorter or something?
Well, yeah, their projects were done, and they just, they hadn't spent hardly any money in comparison, so they're gonna get to have some projects to try to, and went back, and as a board, we decided we ought to try to even things up on the money, because mainly because of legislators.
Beaver, Ellis, Major, Texas, no, Beaver, Seminole, Ellis Major, and Texas, so we had five counties, mostly in later years, except for Beaver starts in twenty-four, we haven't been even there.
So in, in saying that, what it amounts to is we've got, we, which, split up, we deal, we moved some of our big projects, are gonna be, District Two here is gonna take the biggest hit, but that's, that's just the way the ball bounces, because those, my projects haven't just had one phase is all that's happened, but that's alright, I voted for it to be that way. So, but I guess the big part of this discussion is, John, are you wanting to buy and do the rest of your projects on your own?
I don't know where my projects end and stop, though. I don't have no, I don't wanna start any new projects that, that involve these, if you understand what I mean.
That's what, that's where.
Yeah, what we're, what, what I got in front of me instead of starting a new.
Well, your projects are on there.
Yeah.
But if you want to go through, yeah, he's got one. Uh, go, I mean, that's the big decision, if you wanna move forward on your own, and Helen, and I think this lady right here will tell you what you need to do to.
Next year's.
To move forward on your own, how you need to handle that.
Yeah, I guess we can just start with that. Well, before we get over on the individual projects, the total dollars spent in Woods County as of now for District One is seven million, five, five, six, should be there, David, on the total.
Yeah.
Uh, District Two is two million, seven seventy, District Three is four million, four twenty-four, and then District One has that finish up at, what, three seventy this year, and that will put you, after this year's project, they will put you twelve plus, standard district.
Now, that's a block.
Yeah, that's a block, yeah. And the bridge, the, uh, the big bridge, and then the bridge is under construction now, and the three miles of blacktop are included in those figures.
Right. That's the, that's, we go back, we're gonna go back south and do that mile first.
Yeah, the one mile, and then.
That is.
Nor, who's going to get up to the new bridge, get up between the two bridges, and.
Or, we're just starting on the, the agreements for the Seminary Bridge?
Yes, okay, yeah, just for, Amy just sending those out, so then we'll start on environmental for that, and I think I've had to move it to fiscal year twenty-three or twenty-four, I'll have to look and see what it says.
Right, right.
And I moved a little bit of that around since we, since we printed this out.
Right.
So on the twenty-twenty-two, that would be, that JP two-nine-eight-two-two, that's a District Three, that's a bridge John just discussing, needs some powder and repair on it.
Mm-hmm, and Dan Creek?
Sand Creek, yeah, and that one is scheduled for twenty-two construction, and, uh, I don't think we can get it there ready for twenty-two due to environmental stuff, and landlord letters have been sent out, and if we're gonna proceed on with it, we need to get, uh, get that started, get the environment started, but more likely it will slide to twenty-three, but it could be over twenty-three, but it's about, and the only thing that's been done on that is survey, is that's the only thing that's been done in there. And District, and the next one, two-nine-eight-two-one, is scheduled for engineering, but there's nothing been done on that one. And three-oh-four-nine-two-beta, that's your one mile south, and then the three miles north over the next three seventy project, that ties between the two bridges.
Oh, okay, right, right.
That's the next phase of that, and it's scheduled for a four-point-four making, that's what it's in there, and then utilities and right away for the two-nine-eight-two-two for John's. And then fiscal year twenty-three is, uh, oh-four construction for three-one-seven-seven-eight, that's on Bridge Twenty-One, Senary Bridge, but it's probably, in fact, I've moved it around, definitely moved it over to four-point-four, bigger max and dollars here. Yes, I moved it to four-point-four. Three-one-six-six-five is District Three, and that starts at Highway fourteen and extends west four miles, and then we have utilities and right away for the next phase of that is three-one-one-five-seven, that one's split between District Two and District Three, the way Randy and I were looking at the map, that's one mile on District Three, three miles on District Two, on the next step, and there is, uh, that three-one-one-six-five, there's no surveying done on it, and no environmental started. And twenty-four is construction right on utilities on a crosstown bridge of District Two, and, uh, right away utilities on a crosstown bridge of District Three. Twenty-five, we have the, uh, right away, go ahead, John.
Over here on the side, this, uh, number, this JP number, is that the bridge number?
No, that's the ODOT project number, once it's given that number, it stays with it forever. The bridge number would be the, like, CN eighty-three or CN two-fifty-five. And twenty-five is the right away utilities for your two-forty-one, the River Bridge out there east, and then the construction for the District Two and District Three, but after we're rebalancing this, most of these bigger construction projects are gonna need to slide down probably one to two years to rebalance the, the big spreadsheet for all those counties.
So our, our freedom cutoff might be pushed down in here into twenty-seven, is that what you're saying?
Probably the, if you leave the, if you leave the order as it is now, the freedom, the first phase starting Highway fourteen headed west will be twenty-four, I think that's where I'm looking, it'll kind of fit, and then the next phase, if we're still starting at fourteen headed west, then the next phase will probably go down to twenty-six or twenty-seven. But that's one thing we need to know is which, which end of the stuff you guys wanna start on first? If you wanna start at. Freedom and head east or start at Highway fourteen and go west? And then when you at the end wrap it up, there's still the two phases of the Comer Road. And they are in. Twenty seven on this sheet, but by time we get everything balanced out, they'll probably down to twenty nine and thirty. Most of the Beaver roadway projects.
What's the chances of the state changing this again on us? They pushing it back or?
Well, it's, it's not.
Some of this is ten years back, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it's not the state, it's the, well, the legislators took two years out of the program. And then inflation on top of that, so it makes it about, whenever they took the funds to rebalance the state, it makes it about a three year program. Everything was slid back.
Yeah, but what's to say they won't do that again?
We, we, nobody knows.
And then the rebalancing and that is, we had to do that internally to rebalance to get some of the counties back in, back in alive. We were starting to get some questions from people while it was one county. And then at the end of it, if you look back at the very end of it, it showed a huge balance. That was, if we didn't rebalance and put some counties back in there, we would have had Alfalfa, Woods, Woodward and Harper. Would have been in the upper thirties and all other counties would have been mid teens to low twenties. And it was the size of the projects that were chosen back in two thousand and six, whenever the program started.
What causes that? What you just said?
Yeah, the size of the projects showed, yeah. Yeah, Beaver County selected a bridge and it ended up being around four and a half million dollars. And they had two smaller bridges that was one point seven, it would take a little bit. That was their three projects. And all the other counties picked huge projects like you guys did, major reflector racks and stuff and asphalt projects.
Hindsight's twenty twenty, but when they did, you know, everybody did things. And they just told them to pick projects and the ones that got put off, got more expensive than when they picked them, but also they were figured out to begin with. So, yeah. You know, they didn't tell them to pick equal amount, equal cost projects.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're in the statute or anything that says by individual county.
But that's, that's when you guys have to. To, to do that at your board? Is that what you're saying? You're equalizing everybody?
Try to equalize.
Well, trying for down the road because for the main reason is.
It's gonna be a problem down the road, wouldn't you?
Well, yes, it's because when, like I said, when we get to the end of this deal and we've spent almost. Forty thou, forty million here in Woods County and some other counties have spent less than twenty. Then legislators and those commissioners and everybody's gonna start grumping, it's gonna throw a big wrinkle on everything.
So why is this, why is the legislation putting it on you guys? Why don't they say, hey, each county has twenty million dollars of this and however you spend it is however you spend it. If you pick a big project. Just because they pick a big project and it doesn't get done, ten years down the road, you guys are. Are picking some money off of somebody else and putting it to equalize it?
That's what I said, is hindsight's twenty twenty. If they would have put a dollar amount.
Yeah.
To begin with and back in oh five or six, whenever this was done, before any of us existed, it would have simplified things a lot.
Why don't they do the math? Why don't, why?
They're, the legislators, whenever they come and revisit it, they always say, we spent a billion dollars on the county road system, why do we need to give them any more?
Because they see that uh, too big a letter there.
Yeah.
Well, why didn't you spend that other bit of it, you know? I mean, that's.
Oh, it's spent already.
They just don't wanna write the check for it or?
Well, no, they do, but there's only so many dollars. They capped the fund back. We used to receive a hundred and fifty million plus interest. They capped it back to one hundred and twenty million plus interest. And so they put that back to the state general revenue.
That's every year they give us a hundred and one million max.
Max, yeah.
Do we spend that every year with CDs and?
Well, we spend on our portion, but that's statewide.
I think they're statewide, I think there's about twenty five million in the pot now.
Is that, um, cause they've been allowing it to kind of be used because we don't want money sitting there.
Well, because the legislators see it, so they don't, they ain't gonna give you no one.
But one thing the legislators do see is there's, there's a big pot of money and the big pot of money has two hundred and fifty something million in it. It's always that way, cause everything that's, and they don't do it like the counties do. When you encumber funds, you move it over there. They, whenever they encumber funds.
They leave it there.
They leave it there.
Until you spend it.
Until you spend it. And so there's actually, I think Randy sent.
Looks like it's big pot, really just two dollars.
Yeah, whenever they went in and took that, all that money that one year that they took a hundred and thirty something million out. And our two, and our four, fifteen counties at that time, we was thirty million dollars and they, they went in and took.
That's about what they give the health department.
It was.
Like a genuine thirty million. But they, they giving that back.
They giving that back.
The thirty million, but.
Well.
Anyway.
It's a hell of a deal to me, but. It is what it is, right?
And we've asked, uh, I asked Brandon the other day if there's any, any individual county allocations. And he went back and looked again and said there's no stating that there's any individual county allocations like. Woods County would have had X amount, say twenty million dollars up to this point.
Well, you think that, you know, they're counting their money and telling us how to spend it. You'd think they'd go as far as to say, well, you get this much and you get that much and.
Yeah.
But it doesn't work like that.
And we've asked them to do individual county allocations and, and uh, they said, no, they don't even wanna look into it. They don't wanna look into it. It's because they have a huge pot of funds there. If they need money, they can go.
It's reaching.
They can go get it.
Yeah, I don't, they don't wanna do that. Blame it on somebody else.
Yeah, it's not only that. They would have a hard time justifying, just like Carper County, even us, we're a great county, Alfalfa, cause population. And what have you to even it up with other counties because they'd say, well, those other counties are. They're contributing more because there's more population and it comes from license bags, license plates. So if there's more people, there's probably more vehicles would be their deal and then they have to justify why. These ones with low population weren't getting as much as the ones with higher population. It, it would become a real issue for everybody if they tried to do it per county.
Hell of a formula.
Yes.
And that was one battle they did fight and they fought it all along, cause back when the program started, Oklahoma County, Tulsa County, some of the river counties wanted. To get all of their projects first due to population. And I see your point. Like Randy said, they had more population, more vehicles. Running up and down the roads, but they wanted it done first, but they said, no, everybody's gonna do projects and spread them out.
But then the commissioners sat down, the other counties, that theirs were just as important.
Yes, yeah.
And where the big problem comes into is like when you get legislators and I, he hasn't tried to fit yet, but if we don't get this. This taken care of, you got Murdochs from Texas, or from Seminole County and then you got. Pasquale or whatever from Beaver County. And when those counties are getting shorted, they're the ones that's got the stroke, they're saying. You know, just human nature there when you're, you're legislators are from those counties that are. So it's a, we're kinda trying to be proactive on this deal rather than reactive. On the redoing because there's already the grumbling started. What do we need to do here?
One thing we need to do is tell me which projects that you want to go first. Start at Highway fourteen, go west or start at Freedom and come east or uh. The two phases of Tacoma, if they need to be up there. So we've basically got five phases. In progress. And we can, if you want to do uh, we can do away with that JP. Three one one six five, John, if you wanna make yours five miles long, we can do away with that and then we'll keep Randy's as a. Phase two. We're gonna have to break the freedom phase, that's probably.
It went what, four mile?
It went four miles.
To Pipers and then it goes to Freedom and comes to Carberry's? And, and that's the last mile? Is that between Pipers and Carberry's there?
That mile is the, is the combined. It, the, that two and three, that, that one one five seven is that one mile of yours, the last mile. And then the additional, two, three miles a mile.
Back to the.
West, go west. It'd be from.
That would be the last part done?
No.
If it's done like this?
No.
No, that's the second part.
That's the second part. The last part would be from Freedom East.
And Freedom East is gonna need broke up into two phases. So it's six miles, there's different soil types and so we need to break it up into part of the three, two three mile stretches. And it'll fit, we can still get a project done. We can wait and do it all six miles at one time. But it, the whole project will have to move and if we break it up into two, three miles, you can probably get part of it done sooner.
Well, here, here's a definite, I think. If John wants to do his own, I think we, we add a mile to his coming from fourteen.
Fourteen west, okay. And so that would make that stretch five miles.
On the stopper?
Yes, yes, on the three one one.
Wanna make that five miles?
Six five, it would be five miles.
But we're gonna push it out of two, twenty twenty three?
Yes, it would go to twenty. Balance, to balance my big sheet, it'll have to go to twenty four.
Twenty six?
Twenty four, I think it would be.
Pretty much all of that will go down to twenty four, right? From D one.
Yes, yes, yeah. Cause the bridge was already.
And then these others that are on twenty four, are they gonna stay in twenty four?
No, they will all.
They'll all move too?
Yeah, cause uh. Three one one five seven, that oh six and oh seven right away in utilities, so they'll go down. So we'll have to, now, Laney, will we just drop one mile of that off and add it to the description of three one one six five? Or do we need to? The three one one five seven, the description will be less than a one mile.
I will verify if we need to give it a frank indication or if we can just drop it.
Drop, okay.
I think the dropping shouldn't be a problem, that adding.
That adding, okay.
Maybe we find just a new G P number, which is the minimum you would go.
So it's just three, four, five, six, one? Is that the River Bridge East town?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Vote changes in twenty two?
Uh, if. If we uh, continue, if we are twenty two, that Bridge two fifty five is gonna go to twenty three due to the environmental. And the Bridge two nine eight two one. The engineering, it can stay or it can, if you wanna leave it on there or whatever you wanna do. It's a bridge down here by uh. Is that Jack Weeden or by Weeden's, yeah.
Oh.
And it's not terrible shape, so. I think it's in for, in construction for twenty seven.
Twenty nine eighty. Twenty nine eight two one is going to twenty three.
Two nine eight two two, the construction of Bridge two fifty five will go to twenty three.
And twenty nine eight twenty one?
It can stay or go.
That's the one at Weeden's?
Yes. And it's not really in bad shape. It was just put on the list for kind of low tonnage, but it's not condition wise, it's not bad to tonnage.
Okay, the twenty nine eight twenty two?
That's the one uh, south of the Comer Triple. It can go, two nine eight two two.
Is it, is it gonna be on twenty two?
Twenty three.
All those are on twenty three.
So everything's going to twenty three on twenty two?
No, the three oh four nine.
Except for Davis.
Except for the big roadway states.
And that's the bridge.
So all miles out of twenty two, Davis in twenty two. And now down here on twenty three.
Pretty much everything in twenty three.
Is going to twenty four?
Twenty four.
Even Davis, right?
Yes.
And down here in twenty four?
Twenty four is, remember this right away in utilities, so we'll have to look at the.
Ain't nothing gonna get done there, so it'll really be twenty five.
Twenty five, yes.
For all of that? So from twenty two to twenty five before anything gets done, right?
Twenty four.
And that's gonna crowd into Davis?
No, twenty two will do Davis, three seventy will finish it up.
And that's the one we're doing now?
The one the environmental's ongoing now. Up there by Smeary. Now, from the big bridge, from the River Bridge south to tie all of the new blacktop together.
Cause I agree.
Yeah.
The river building right now.
Yes, the bridge.
That's the one, that's this bridge?
Yes, that's that roadway and it, and then it's got one mile.
On south.
On south, that's already ground up.
Right.
Yes, it gets that and then from the new blacktop to the new River Bridge. It's all of that.
Blacktop.
Yes.
And then we go to, then we move the Sceneri, we'll go to twenty four.
Yes.
And then. So that moves to twenty four within. Twenty five.
Is the schedule for.
The big bridge at East.
And that's gonna depend on how long environmental takes.
Right.
Cause it, it'll take a while there. So it very well may go to twenty six, but we'll just have to see where it ends up.
Right.
Whenever we reshuffle.
Oh, they fall in with it.
That was, it hasn't been repaired once, had it, or twice?
Twice.
And on the, so if we make John's a five mile project, we'll have to drop, drop a, add a mile to that.
You're saying going from Highway fourteen and going to.
All the way up to the, the face of the hill there.
That's five miles, yeah. And it's good that that one mile being done last, it'll get it done in the first phase.
Yeah, whichever, well, you guys, whichever order you guys pick, however it is, so. Randy, you have nine miles of that from Freedom East.
Right.
And it was, it was originally been in the six and the four and four.
But it won't be done for four, five more years, right?
Twenty, twenty four on the first phase. So that's basically three years.
Unless it gets something changed, I mean. He never knows, right?
It changes every year, it changes every day.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
If you got.
I hate to say, well, that's, yeah, let's do it like that and then tomorrow it changes. I mean, we gotta have a plan.
Didn't we, didn't there surveying done on that north west of Freedom?
West to Freedom from Highway.
No, going east, I'm sorry.
Yeah, their survey, cause it originally was the original, then back several years ago when you guys voted to do three seventy. At that same time, you said go from Highway fourteen, but the surveying is done on that far end.
That far west, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
And if twenty four to keep.
But we changed it to move to the east end, cause we swapped, we swapped all the way around.
Yes, yeah.
And if we don't continue with that swap, I'm gonna get swapped right on out to the, to the last. And if we don't continue with that swap, I'm going to get swapped right on out to the, to the last. Start it out at the first and, and end up at the last. Because I traded D one for the, the three seventy.
Both of you and Randy both traded.
Yeah.
Freedom cut through to finish three seventy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And three seventy is.
And it still could change.
And it still could change. Depends on what you guys say to do. And environmental takes time and right away takes time.
And if we do the environmental and right away and three years goes by, we got to redo it?
We have to do the environmental after three years. After it's done and signed off on, it's good for three years.
Does it have federal, for the annual, so instead of doing reevaluations now, no matter when it's done, they have to do an environmental checklist? And so it's, so actually that makes it a little bit easier. They don't have to do a full reevaluation. They say, okay, it's ready to go, let's look at it again, has anything really changed? If things changed, then they'll do that revaluation. Otherwise, they just look at the studies and say, okay, everything's remained the same. So it's made it a little bit easier. Like I don't have to go in and make that request three, you know, once we've hit three years, so.
Figure it's just about the money. I won't pay it again.
No, no. Well, if it's done through, um, if there's federal funds on it, you guys aren't going to be paid. That's done through it all. As I was saying, that's not anything I'm aware of.
Over here, over here in the column, other funds, a thousand dollars of that is that's federal money. And that way, ODOT does the environmental, and they do that at, at zero cost.
So that's a big benefit of putting that on there. And if they ask that before four, that saves you a lot of heartache. Because all of those things, there's course problems, they're already been done with all the other fish and wildlife and that type of stuff, which of course is what they ask for.
Well, I don't know what to do other than do what we're, same old, same old thing we've been doing.
All hypothetical. I hope, I hope it works. Then when it does, we'll, yeah, all right.
Right? So three, one, one, six, five, we want to add a mile. And three, one, five, seven, we're taking off a mile, correct?
Yes.
And that's off the three, so one, just your three mile.
Yeah, taking three, a mile off of District Three, off of three, one, one, five, seven. We're adding to three, one, one, six, five.
And we need to make the decision on whether we start at Freedom or highway fourteen? Do I?
And is that adding a mile to?
No, just taking a mile off. Taking a mile, taking.
And adding a mile to D three.
Yeah, because that project was D three and D two split, so it would be all five miles on these.
Right, this one here is it going to stay a mile or is it going to three now?
Thank you. How many miles of this do you have?
And it'll all be two.
So it's fourteen miles across there. It's nine miles from America, three.
This line is fourteen to fifty. Or I think it's fifty. Because I've got that, that curve in line in there.
Yeah, there's a couple.
It is, it's fourteen from my house of Camp Houston, so it's got to be fifteen on that.
My name's Lene.
More, because you're going north.
Well, it's just.
Right?
Well.
You go north and then you're going off at an angle there by, you're going north a couple of.
No, north one mile.
North, and now.
Yeah.
But is it, is that four, it's either fourteen or fifteen mile?
It's eight miles to the curve if you start at highway fourteen.
Okay.
Then you go one mile north.
Nine.
And then how many miles is it from the?
Five, five including, five plus and with the angle.
Five.
If you went straight, it would be five.
Five miles.
The angle will be a little, make it a little forty.
Nine miles to that.
So we're not going to worry about these?
Yeah, they're all moved out.
They'll all move down, right?
Well, the only thing I got to say about that deal on which end goes first and which is, as of right now, D one's had, got, had spent seven and a half million. D three's spent four and a half. And D two, we've spent two point seven.
And that includes every bridge and every road that's been done since two thousand. So two subs. That's the match money for the bridges. You've had some, John's had some, all three districts had some.
Yeah, it's not nearly, you look at Woodford County right next to it, D three hadn't had any money.
No. And they voted to stay with their original, original pick to stay, you know, on track and facts. So Randy won't have, District Three won't have anything down until twenty, wait, long ways. Twenty-four, seven.
I like how it is. I mean, I like the plan you have, but if you want to change it, change it. It's going to get changed before it gets done anyway, I imagine. Or defunded or.
Yeah, or a boom, boom, they should double money, yes. Play them on a thing.
Are you sick?
Don't think that way.
I like them, but.
Drive through camp and toss those numbers.
Makes my heart attack.
Well, we can leave it as it is, but the next thing you need to decide is, John, you're going to have to, you're going to have to say which projects you're going to do and what you want them to finish or.
What, what, what they got right here is what I want them to finish. I don't want to start a new engineer on something I don't even know I'm going to get yet. Do you understand that?
Mm-hmm. So what about the Freedom? Nothing's been done on it. You have option, if you want to change it, you have the option to change it.
Yeah, but, but I don't want to, uh, I don't want to change it after we've dove, we've dove in this project.
The project.
I understand what you're saying. I could hire somebody to environmental it, or hire somebody to engineer it. But I'd just still keep the same engineers on the whole thing. You know what I'm saying? Whether, I don't want to cloud the water, you using him and then I'm using somebody else and there be some, some bullshit, you know? Well, you didn't figure it like that or, you know what I'm saying? I'd like to just keep it all in the same bed until we get some more.
Well, that's what we just did here when we.
I've been a county commissioner since, since twenty fifteen and I haven't seen anything done under bridges. You know what I mean? Money gets pushed back and shoved around and, and there's nothing that we can do about it other than just sit back and make these decisions. No, the, the whole state, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to, uh.
But now, if we're not going to, if we're not going to change the, if you're not going to, if you're going to leave the engineering with us, in my opinion, there's no need to change the description of the projects. Leave them a four, four and.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Four, four and there.
And you keep it, keep it.
And if we're going to, if we're going to continue to do it, we must do the four, four like it was. We got the dollars in here that way and we, and we've already got the task orders in there. We'll just continue, continue on with them. But we don't need to change the project description and make JP's.
I mean, that's, I, that's the simplest way I see it done it. Because you don't know what's going to change on you guys.
No, we don't. I mean, it changes.
Well, I change it here and then, well, hell, here, here's another. Well, I'm tired of changes. I just want to get something done, you know? That's, keep it simple.
Going back to as it is, right?
Yeah, on the descriptions, yes.
Back to the norm.
Yep. So all this is different.
So John on the bridge down by Weedner, two, nine, eight, two, one, the engineering that's scheduled for this year. Do, nothing has been done on that. Do you want to?
Does it need done? I mean.
The bridge, it needs done, but it's not a big priority. I mean, there's, there's worse, and one reason it's at the end is there's other, there's worse bridges in the whole county.
Okay, you're my bridge inspector, you, you tell me.
I think it needs done because it's a twelve or fourteen ton bridge. And at one point in time, there were school buses using it. I don't know if they use it anymore.
Still do.
Still do. So to help the school bus route.
There's, there's the answer.
Okay, so we'll leave it there.
Yeah.
So do you want to use the CED or do you want to hire an outside firm? It's your choice, whichever.
Like I said, it is on this paper.
Okay.
Until some newspaper comes out, I don't want to.
I mean, you have the choice to do it now if you want to.
I understand that. I have that choice, that's why I'm making that choice right now. If, if you don't want me to make that choice, you speak up.
No, we'll leave it there and.
Okay.
It's a school bus route and it's twelve or fourteen tons, whatever that is.
It makes my life easier, I appreciate it.
Huh?
It's so, it makes my life easier, I appreciate it.
My, I'm all about that.
So Lene will go ahead and turn in the, you have all the environmental stuff, so we'll need to send, turn that in for the two, nine, eight, two, two.
Okay.
We'll need to send that, you'll need to turn that in to see it, environmental. And then John, she'll send you a letter and it'll have like five or six environmental consultants and you pick one. Frank, yes, pick three.
Yes, you'll order the three that you prefer.
And you put a star by the ones that you want and a happy face by the ones you really want me to pick.
I can, I can ask some people if you don't want my attention.
And on the list last week, when we looked at Ellis County project, there was six or seven on there, but three.
Yeah, but there's some going to be in there that ain't worth shit.
Well, but no, Tommy, you definitely could get better ideas.
Very hard.
Yeah.
Three of them are like limited availability, so I think we only down to four sources.
Okay.
That's what we got, so. And then we'll have to do the same thing on the three, one, one, six, five. I'll do the same thing on it. And you have, I'm pretty sure you have a footprint and everything for it also.
I'm sure we do.
And we'll order surveys for that.
I got next week of.
I know you are. Do the technical results, square it up and straighten it out.
So what I'm going to do here is this right?
Yeah, I'll just put the, I just put, basically leave the order as is.
Uh huh.
Leave the, leave the order as is and just have them sign that and have that put in.
Okay, so my years up here are correct?
Yeah, a little later years, yeah.
And then I just.
They can change.
Yeah, they can, they can change depending on.
Right, but for right now.
And we have to be, you know, even if I was running to the.
Twenty might stay, but the rest might change.
Yeah, twenty's done, so we stay twenty-one.
Yeah. We've got a hundred years to work it out.
Or do you want them to sign yours? I just want to move down on the standard.
Yeah.
Or.
Was it, we need a motion now to do that? What does the motion need to be?
Uh, leave, leave project order as it is on that document.
And that'll take, that'll take care of that.
I knew that you so, leave the project order as is.
Item six, all in favor?
Aye. I do, I'm John's second. Way as it is now, without moving all the projects put in there, twenty-two million at the end of fiscal year, twenty-eight negative. So basically you're in half. And that's adding Bieber, Ellis, Seminole, those projects.
Will that get all that straightened down and keep Murdoch?
Yeah, I think this one, maybe you guys. This area, like. And it's not only us, there's other areas in the state I know, uh, boy, when Randy and I talked to him here a while back, he could.
Sure.
Why aren't you? Dewey County was down so low and then, but they fixed that problem. So Warshatab County, now, everybody else is up there, Warshatab County is actually over in like.
You can. Okay.
It's not for each other.
And it's, it's even, I get down here and we get pretty close, we're going to get on that.
So my experience is every CD has its own budget. I know, we just need to adjourn, don't we?
Yeah, I guess so. Sorry about that. I got a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
So that would be done.
Somebody for?
Okay.